I have five inches in Wood River.
Wood River had worn with it.
Yeah, I mean, there wasn't really any accumulation here until you got attached like Drano. And it started to show up and then, you know, white salmon was pretty heavy and.
Yeah.
Portland was was really nice.
Yeah.
Traffic out.
Yeah.
Portland must have got it.
We did.
I think it just kind of.
I guess because we got such a blessing.
Was.
Earlier in the season.
I was literally walking up to the door.
We already got our fair share.
I guess that must be it.
Switch this on so people can talk and.
Yep. Remote in and it's hard to monitor both.
So when we don't want to really get dressed up, leave the house, we can show up.
Yeah, I've done one of these meetings in my area before. Good to know, right?
Yeah.
Now you have a visual for next time he's at home.
I think we've already recorded that. What you say. You never can tell what your camera really sees.
Don't drop your tablet. Well, I didn't know you were Nancy's daughter.
Yeah, do you know my mother?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, years ago. Yeah.
She retired from the foundation, right?
Yeah, she used to work with the community foundation. Were you?
Well, she she got a lot of loan or grants for this area.
Yeah.
And that, and I was talking to someone the other day and then they said she'd retired and that I hadn't heard that.
Yeah, she did a couple of different things from then. She worked for Portland State. She did some with them and then she's now HGR running their charitable foundation.
Really?
Yeah, so.
Who's that?
HGR, HGR, the engineering firm.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're.
She's too young to retire.
She's really excited too. I think probably next year she shared is she'll be retiring. But she actually had, she was like, you need to reach out to the community foundation because we were talking about a park up that by the school. We have that grassy lot and there's nothing there.
Unproper.
Yeah, and then I was like, what can we do to put a park there? And I told my mom and she's like, we should reach out to this community foundation. That's exactly something else up their alley.
I lived across from the high school and that would be a great place for, especially since the county came in and just wrecked the place. I just cut down all of.
Talking about you talk about the one that's west of the high school?
Yes.
Okay.
Or east, would it be east?
West. Yeah, it's a big space.
Yeah.
It would be nice to have something up there.
Yeah. So.
Is it still the Southwest Foundation Foundation?
Yeah, the Community Foundation for Southwest Washington, I believe so. My understanding is the end of Janice is just now getting like 25 years there. She's like celebrating 25 years there, just, you know, this month. So, you know, that's exciting for her. They're going out to celebrate together or something. So I think she was gonna put her, put a bug in her ear about, you know, sending money back to the community down here.
Thing, when you retire, there's always way more to do than.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, give her my regards, Mary Rupar.
Yeah.
I haven't seen her in many, many years. I think since she lived in that house up the hill.
So they're back. There's that's they spend their summers here now.
Oh, nice.
And probably more now that we're out here and I have a three year old daughter.
Yesterday.
Yeah.
Oh, and I thought, oh, okay, but the link chain was up still.
The chain was in that lot just.
Next to it.
Everybody sees what's on the way to the dump.
Well, on the way back.
You get to see her entire city in one fell swoop.
Oh, Bernard is with us.
Are you new?
I was new about a month ago. Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah. March.
She heard bad things about the planning.
I don't need information. Hard questions we have.
New to the city, but not new to the area. Born and raised in Carson, so. Went away for a minute, but back now.
Good. We need more of that.
Yeah. I would agree. Yep, yep. Same house, still live there.
Well, six o'clock. Let's get started. Welcome, everyone. And Ben, do you want to go through our procedures for those folks that?
Yeah.
Online.
Mary, of course, you can get Jeff's attention directly. Bernard online, it looks like you are, or Christie. Looks like either one of you are online, so you need just raise your hand and I'll be monitoring that to allow your input over the course of the evening. Okay.
What's a panelist?
It's a webinar function and so people can't zoom bomb and like Bernard doesn't have video or audio connection until. We allow a panelist to do and so I'm going to take hers online.
Okay, I've never seen that. Thank you. Little tip top here.
Yeah, I don't think I ever even heard Joan.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Dylan is piped up a few times, I think. All right, let's continue. Let's, we have some minutes to approve from our meeting last, last one, March 13th. We've had a chance to run through those. Any thoughts or comments, additions, deletions, corrections?
Glaring. Unless there's any other. Notes I would move to approve.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, August. Is there a second?
There is a second.
Thank you, David. Got a motion in a second for further discussion on the minutes. Hearing them. All those in favor say aye. If those say the same sign. Motion carries, we have gotten into business. So now we're at the public comment period, Mary.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Mary Rupar Stevenson. Just very briefly, I want to advise you, we're going to have a Association of Boundary Review Boards Conference here in October, the 12th through 14th. I spoke to Leanna this afternoon. I'm the vice, or I'm the, I'm the president-elect, so it gets to be in my county. And we're putting together the conference now, so we look forward to having, bringing some business into Skamania County. And to Stevenson, since we're having it here. I believe with October 12th through 14th. And. We, we, we haven't decided on the venue. It's all money dependent, so we're still in that phase, but it will be here. And. People are invited to come to listen to the speakers if they want to. And we'll let you know, it more will be sussed up as we, October doesn't seem far away, but it's further away than summer. So we'll, we're still putting everything kind of in stone. And Stevenson does need a Boundary Review Board member since David Bennett resigned. Justin Gross and myself are on the Skamania County Boundary Review Board. And usually it's five people, but those other two have not been selected by the junior taxing districts or the port. So maybe they will in the future, but we don't get used very much, the Boundary Review Board. But the commissioners throw us out there when they don't want to take the hit. And we've been out there a few times, but we've haven't had to make a lot of really difficult decisions. But again, October 12th through 14th, I believe you do have a person who might be interested. And I'm looking forward to her being selected for it and that. So that'll be a good addition. And again, it's a, it's about 40 or 50 people conference, not a huge group. 15 counties are, have boundary review boards and, and we do follow all the RCWs for Growth Management Act planning. And we're, we're a unbiased. Committee that people can come to whenever they want to do annexations or change their boundaries or whatever. But we have to follow the RCWs that are pertaining and I think 3693 is one of them, the primary. If I remember correctly. Okay, that's, that's it. Thank you very much for your time.
Mary's last point there about annexations is really the only time that you'll, as planning commissioners, engage with any of their real processes. So when the city goes down, goes through all the steps of the annexation, will set an annexation boundary. And, and then have the vote, however that goes, whether it's petition or an actual vote. And then the city's decision there goes to the Boundary Review Board and they can actually change the boundary of the city. So if there's one property that's left out of an annexation, it would clearly be served by the water that's coming down. Or the sewer that's coming down from that, they would have the authority to modify that boundary or kick it back to the city for that. So. The person who hopefully is interested is now, so let that be a lesson to all of you that you think you may be done if you.
A home for retired planning commission members.
You can go and get things thrown at you.
Okay, any other comment? Good. Let's move on to new business. Then I see the agenda says the condition use permit review has been postponed.
Yeah, we sent out notices for that. The applicant had a conflict tonight, so they wanted to postpone that until the meeting. And so instead of holding a public here or opening a public hearing now or doing the basis of the proposal, holding a public hearing open. Which puts you all in awkward position in the most time if anybody tries to talk to you. We'll just not go into it at all here and re-advertise, re-notice.
Is that online?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. So now we get down to the comprehensive plan amendment and zoning code amendment. Ben, what do you have for us?
I've got a whole new top plan amendment proposal for you. This would be to integrate the work we've done on the SMP with the existing confidence by on the existence. As we're doing that, I've got some other changes to for you to consider in the zoning code. None of them are like mandatory, as if anything were mandatory, but. What I mean by that is they can be taken out and not serve some important function within a program where it would trigger a lot of other changes. So it would be really easy to just remove the components of this that you don't want to see. I am hopeful that this review can go quickly, more quickly than the complaint amendment that I actually started before. Because the actual complaint amendment itself is limited. It's only to integrate with the shoreline master plan. So two decision points for you are what methods of public involvements are appropriate and who is responsible for undertaking those methods. So that's the same decision points you saw. Going into the SR district, some change discussion. I've got a longer memo than usual for kickoff report, but I wanted to get enough information out there for you to really whittle down what you want to move forward with. For the conscious public involvement effort. Make your recommendation that you establish that effort and reject any of the aspects which just might prolong your review beyond May next meeting. The comprehensive plan. Is attached, there are several the same cleanup changes that are identified on the top half of the board here. That we need, it would make sense to do on the bottom half because we're talking about that. Date corrections, document maintenance as far as the header and footers that we talked about at the top. And building in more changes all occurred. I attached the wrong. Attachment to this, so it is anything that's in blue, it's highlighted in blue. It wasn't intended. And purple and yellow. Which means that we may not have all of those pages shoot.
So what's the headline?
The highlighting is relevant for the, the top half review and so the dark blue are changes proposed. For the SMP integration, the bottom half of the board. Green had a green dot in your review last time on the top half of the board. Purple. Was get public works director input on yellow is where I made a change based on the red. If it didn't get one, if it didn't get highlighting, I think I just missed it. So. If we go through that more, I will. Fire off some copies.
The highlighting with the cross out, is that supposed to be cross out or not? Okay.
It is.
Yeah, then we'll see the correct one.
I'm at the blue highlighting. It's very difficult to read. Well, that was intentional, so you could ignore it.
You'll never know.
Okay.
Redacted.
Redacted. All right, we are living in the 21st century, so we do have it on the board. How can I share that screen? And this is.
There's usually a share if you're the host.
Okay. So to run through it, putting the new date on as amended through potentially May of 2022, if we meet that schedule. Removing a comma, the word now tells me is wrong. Changing the date again. Adding a date where they're, where we missed adding in 2013. Reorganizing the acknowledgements page so that the information is still there from 2013 and having the current information. Adding a record of changes if all these occur. Try to anticipate every change that we needed to make as part of this one packet. Changing the header and footer to just reference the year. Of adoption and as it's amended through. Sorry, Mary, but did include Ashes Lake since.
Yeah, I haven't gotten to that organization. It's on my to do list.
In this case, this is where the integration starts. So Ashes Lake being what it's referred to in the SMP. Continuing there, the old SMP reference, the 1975 Skamania County Shoreline Management Master Program. And this removes references to dates from that here. Correction somewhere in that line.
The street is different, isn't it? Street center, the lake is different than the.
And the road name is different. Yeah. And as Mary identified, it was either pluralized. Or. Or, yeah, an apostrophe was left off or something somewhere along the way. Now we're getting into the meat of the plan, so in goal two, which is talks about urban development and environmental protection. We add something to reference the shoreline restoration plan, which didn't exist in 2013. Integrated in that way and also. Talk about establishing the, the regulatory program implementing that. By reviewing land uses and land policies. Changes to goal four, which is downtown and waterfront are. As much reorganization as it is integrating SMP. So the first one there really talks about different shoreline access. Concepts that were already there and moved. A difference objective in here is a tactic to support development of a large waterfront gathering place such as an amphitheater. For community events. Again, reorganization, some of this was moved to goal two. This one becomes about managing usage of the downtown waterfront. And different concepts about how to do that that were taken from elsewhere, such as enhanced Cascade Avenue is the main waterfront street. Those appear here, just in the red line form to say that they'd be removed. There's somewhat duplicative objective and tactic in goal nine, Parks and Recreation. This one says protect Rock Creek to improve habitat. And then here there was facilitating and courage enhancement of Rock Cove. And so we just, the proposal is to lump all those together, protect.
Well, Rock, Rock Creek is the river.
Yeah.
So is it, like, do you mean the pole? Okay. Sorry.
Yeah, I missed it. Adding the new organization, the SDA is a potential partner. And this, it was a very tedious effort to identify which of the objectives and tactics were assigned to which departments. And whether those were ongoing, short term, mid-range or long-term priorities.
Well, that is when you get paid the big bucks.
Yes. In different ways and then.
But now it's done for two years.
Now it's done and then identifying what goals have been removed. In this section. Those weren't moved. This is just tidying up where page breaks are.
A point of inquiry. Is the, you mentioned an amphitheater down by the waterfront. Is that going to compete with the thing going on in front of the courthouse or?
Don't know. This is just a tactic that's already in the, the plan saying, hey, we should have some thing, some community gathering space on waterfront.
Are they still thinking about renaming Cascade its historical name or?
I haven't heard anybody talk about that.
Okay.
What are you talking about?
It used to be called Whiskey Run Row or something like that, which I think is out in the river now, but.
Yeah, yeah, that's where the old saloon was, the old Grange saloon was. Well, I thought they had it, didn't they use the name whiskey row? Didn't Amy put it?
They were working on that. I don't know where that concept went. The city council has presented this concept from the distillery down there. Organized that, but on behalf of other businesses to say, hey, what if we renamed Cascade Avenue Whiskey Row or Whiskey Flats? Apparently there's conflicting historical documentation on what, what it was called. And don't know where that went, honestly.
Yeah, I hadn't heard anything about it. Recent.
The name probably related to how long you spent there.
Good one, August.
Continuing on, and there's a zoning code amendment to also integrate the SMP. That starts in the definitions where we provide a definition of shoreline master plan or SMP.
The master plan or master program?
Plan. I got that clarified right before we did the last version of it.
That's not called a plan, but then other people call it the program.
Shoreline Master Plan.
Okay, stop share for, well. Zoning code amendment.
Right there, it's a shoreline's master program.
Yeah, that part is deleted.
Yeah, so. True.
It's. I just made sure that I got the right information this last time around because I've gone backwards on what it is. And it's the shoreline management act at the state level, but the master plan is a specific document within the suite of documents that is the program.
And I think the ecology program. Is the shoreline management program within the agency.
Which one is the project that's the. Let's see, I will go ahead and pull up.
Ben, as, as we're looking at this and, and thinking about. You know, how we, how we go through this, what level of public documentation? I mean, we're reconciling documents that have already been adopted. So we're not talking about any major policy change.
I believe so. Two. One exception to that would be a, there would be a policy change that's proposed in here for you to consider. And then one clarification to that that I'll offer. So in 2017, the city reformatted our zone code. Prior to that, each zone was its own chapter of the code and it had its own list of allowed and conditioning allowed uses. And between those liters, there were small changes. So four of the residential districts had this listing for how far animals were or weren't allowed. And then one district didn't include goats. When it said that they weren't allowed and these other ones said goats weren't allowed. So why would that be? It's clearly an oversight, but. In counting up all those different variations of use categories, there were 270 distinct use categories through the program. We have systematically worked to combine those and describe those so that we don't need that many use categories. And as of now, we're at, I think, 110, down from 270 and makes it a little bit more rational, a little bit shorter, a little bit more readable each time. The proposal in here, well. More broadly, the transportation utility and communications set of use categories was never amended. Within that category, we have watercraft, we have piers and docks, we have marinas, we have boating facilities. We have commercial and industrial boating facilities. And the reason why we never amended it in 2017 is because we knew that we'd be doing this shoreline master program. And there'd be an opportunity to do that and that opportunity is now. And so. Six use categories there become one, something like that. And while we're. Six use categories there become one, something like that. And while we're amending that section, also wanting. You all to look at and recommend consolidating the other ones in that category. Worst example of that is railroad facility. And then railroad facilities, including ticket offices and waiting rooms. Why? Why does the city need to designate those differently?
Because they stupidly got rid of their railroad station.
So this would just make it one category says railroad facility. And. And then it does. Similar effort to consolidate parking. Facilities and so four becomes three in that case. And. Different types of public works facilities become one. I made a strong effort not to make any policy changes, even though there's a lot of change that that happens there, but to keep the use. As either allowed prohibited or permitted prohibited conditionally allowed. Within the district. And so to my eyes, there is no change with that, but. Someone could see something different, but I'm not seeing that proposal. So that's the one. The other exception that that would be a policy change is within the PR districts currently. If a road runs by the front of the property, you need to be set back twenty five feet from that road with new buildings. If it runs to the side of a property, you need to be set back only ten. Did an assessment of how that impacts properties and buildings within the zone. And there are non parcels within the design there. Five of them have nonconforming. Buildings on them. There are. Sorry, there are seven parcels, five of which have nonconforming buildings. There are twenty eight total buildings, nine of which are nonconforming. So that's thirty two percent of the buildings don't meet our requirement. And presents a question of is it a requirement that's off or is it the buildings that are off? And so I'm asking you to consider that question. Or consider whether you don't want to deal with that question at this time and just pass off until some later zoning code amendment.
Is this? Side current or is that?
Ten feet on the side is currents. A suggested change would make it.
Drowning district.
The public use and recreation zone. So these are county, city, state properties around Rock Cove. The proposal is to change that to ten feet so they match and also apply the best re visibility triangles. To like we did when we produced the. Our three districts. Notably, the proposal doesn't have a minimum garage door setback of twenty feet like we have in the R three zone. I don't have any reason for excluding that. I just didn't. So that's something that we could. Wanted to and be easy to add that or include the figure in here about those different areas on page sixty eight of the packet. Sixty seven and sixty six are where the. Maps are and the buildings that would become conforming as a result of the change to ten feet. Notably, one of those is the former Grange building and one of our comprehensive plan tactic. Facilitates rehabilitation of the Grange.
Definitely, I didn't remember the garage. Limitation. Try to keep that consistent going forward. Is that? That's my recommendation.
I have a question. Are you all discussing two different things? The SMP stuff and the changes can be done without going back to the. Because it's already been adopted. So that part should be out of this discussion and just those parts that are new. That Ben is proposing going for for public participation. Is that correct? Because you don't, the SMP stuff is dumb.
There's an important point of order here that I forgot to include. So we are advertised as a public hearing for this. Anytime we do an amendment to the comprehensive plan, we need a public hearing. So this is an advertised public hearing. And. Why would I make that relevant now? It's a public process. The scope of the process that you all decide will depend on what the amendment is.
So I make a motion for that. That was your.
Asking. No, I was trying to.
Already on the.
Yeah.
Some ethic of the board already.
I've got the nine, what I. Categorizes nine components here. Top two are. Clean up housekeeping. SMP integration where it appears within the code. Setback consistency is something down here and the what I would. Be hearing is that that would become a red dot based on August proposal. That would become a red dot. In order to add the twenty foot garage door. Requirement. Not building setbacks specifically for vehicle. Yeah, just so that everybody. Knows what that is. But the question still remains whether you want to deal with that issue at all right now or even towards something else.
Those driveway things are a problem. I I I don't know if you saw my comments when he first sent that out. We have those condos on Lasher. And Vancouver. And the butt end of those cars sticks out in the road. Now he's building three more things condos or whatever on the other side toward Richard's old property. Do they have a twenty foot driveways? So why didn't those other ones have twenty foot driveways?
They weren't required to at that time. Yeah, I haven't come yet.
Yeah, there was a truck parked there three feet out on the road. And that and you're not going to put a sidewalk in there either.
I mean, it's dangerous for multiple ways, but mostly it was for pedestrian safety.
Yeah, well, you know, people want sidewalks, but if you keep reducing the setbacks, then you're not going to get sidewalks. Right? So.
Unless it's your unless it's your front doorstep.
Well, yeah, so you know, I think I think it should be a public discussion for sure on that. Because the more and more people want sidewalks, but they don't want them in front of their houses. They want them on somebody else's property. And that the driveway should be long enough to accommodate. A truck. Or an eighteen footer at least, so twenty feet. Plus whatever for a sidewalk, a six foot sidewalk.
I don't understand the red dot. What's the red dot? This is reject.
Yeah.
A pinkish red dot.
Yeah.
We need to invest in new red markers.
So and I may have been premature. So let's let's try to. Segment this out into. If we are to proceed with a setback discussion, do you want it to include the both of the requirements on page sixty eight of the?
Didn't we discuss this last year?
We did for a different zone.
What we're looking for is a more cohesive. You know, so that it's not of this zone is this way, this zone is that way. I guess so that it's.
Consistent.
Yes.
Yeah. And so the top half here, the visibility triangles are included. The bottom half here, the driveway length of twenty feet is not included currently. And so if we are to proceed discussing this. Would. There be consensus to include that twenty foot driveway length requirement? Yes, means. Agree with that. No means that sideways means I don't care. That means I disagree with that.
So we're agreeing to twenty feet. Is that what you're asking? Agreeing or rejecting or being ambivalent?
You could go like this.
Yeah. You know, given the nature of the areas that we have zoned for PR, the nature of the use and the pedestrian. Use that we see in that area, I think you want that that twenty foot. Drive.
Yeah, but call correctly. You based this off of a full size pickup truck, right?
Well, my beautiful saber was eighteen feet long when I had her. So she, you know, if you get a Cadillac or something, it's going to be that long or a or a van, minivan.
I have a country squire station wagon.
It's thirty, it's forty two feet.
It's a boat, man.
Pocket sideways. Where did twenty feet come from? Because that doesn't give you any ring to potentially walk in front or behind if you're either.
Strategic compromise.
Are there any public works rules that apply to this? Like engineering stuff? Not in our current standard. With.
Well, I think I think part of it came from that twenty foot triangle, which we did bring from something else. So that kind of in the figure seventeen, ten. The one that's up. That one there sets that at twenty. So that kind of became. Logical.
I remember it had a lot to do with visibility, right?
Right, exactly. It was the visibility coming out of the garage and being able to see if there was anyone coming down the street. So you didn't. Back out into a bicycle or a kid chasing a ball. Et cetera.
Before we did this, the setback was fifteen feet. And then we allowed it to be ten. And I think it was a compromise. Position to increase.
Allow the building to come, but not the vehicle aspect of it. So. Like it was a balance.
Well, it looks like I'd have a chance to increase on a case by case basis. So. Go to that. I would say your last line though that says. Garage door shortest distance. Oh, I guess it says the shortest distance between garage door and the. The curb. So that's essentially saying. Your property line might be in a different place than your sidewalk. It's the shortest of those. All the combinations. Okay.
So if your property line is five feet back from the sidewalk, then then you still have to be twenty feet.
Prop line. So you could get a little bit of extra.
I mean, basically it was because they were trying to do condos. They were condensing the size and that's why they were asking for the ten feet instead of the fifteen. So this was. Working.
It becomes very problematic, especially on Lasher. Because people from the apartments walk down and walk up and the people from the condos walk their dogs. And if you've got two cars going and a car parked. Butt end in the street. It's just, it gets hairy and and it's it's becoming more and more.
A lot of it is that people don't actually drive as slow as they should be in those areas.
I do. Thank you very much. Most people.
Seen you bombing through town.
Yeah, you did not see me bombing through town. But yeah, so you know, and and also in these situations, where is the right of way mentioned in the documentation? The city's right of way. That's one of the options. Yeah. Because they're usually at least thirty feet from the center line, right?
Smallest one, I believe is fifty. Oh, from the central line.
Yeah, the county's got sixty, you know, but. Yeah, county sixty, I think we're thirty here in the city.
There's no good guidance. Some many roads are sixty foot total width, many are forty foot width, many are fifty, some total width is fifteen feet. It's just a big mixed bag.
Yeah. But it should be something that's included when you're doing. Stuff so that you know. You have to stay out of the right way. That you have to stay out of the right way. So so the person knows and the city knows and everybody's on the same page, I think. So really, it's probably not even curved sidewalk, walk pedestrian pathway or property line. It would be right away line, period. Because anything else inside the right away line needs right away permits to be in a park. Oh, yeah, that's thank you. So you should come to more of these meetings. That seems like. Sorry.
That was my thought is I think we're. We have the wrong distance there. Twenty feet is the wrong distance. And maybe in some cases it may be fine depending on where that right away. But no parking within within the right away. So no, no driveway parking with with within that right away.
It's twenty feet from the right, is what you're thinking, back.
Twenty feet from the right away?
That would ensure no parking in the right away. If you're parking in your driveway. You might have extra room because.
It does, it does say that. It says sidewalk, pedestrian way, property line or right of way.
Is there ever a situation where? The. But there wouldn't, we wouldn't have a situation where our curb or sidewalk would be outside of the right away. Right?
Not necessarily.
There should be.
That it's on Eastman adjacent to.
A long skinny eighth Eastman or something?
I've seen that in other jurisdictions where they. Come back later and give you easements for the sidewalk.
Right, if you're going to put one in.
And so that's not the right of way line.
True. So maybe it is good to keep that for when. Right aways further than the sidewalk.
Basically, it's requiring a minimum of twenty feet from the point that a pedestrian would be. Idea.
Yeah, keep it on. And that's a good idea because you want your city to be. How can I say this? We all love our autos and that are cars, but we also want people to walk. And to be safe while they're doing it, even on streets that don't have sidewalks.
Right. And that's. I mean. We were trying to be as inclusive in that safety margin as we could be and still. Be cognizant of. Development. So let me, let me try to wrap this and move forward. I can for you do a large, larger assessment of different vehicle lengths. Or since we already have twenty foot as a measurement here for setbacks in this district, we could roll. Twenty five feet for that. We could rely on that and say that this change. Is only applying to buildings, parts that aren't associated with. And so we keep that twenty five feet that's that's existing. For the setback. Between. Yeah, but all that language there. Not sure I'm making any sense here. Instead of using the twenty that we use in other districts, we use twenty five for this district. The concept is consistent across, but the distance would be different.
I think if you lose those, you lose your opportunity to have your twenty feet. from edge of driveway to pedestrian, right? If we don't include the visibility triangle, like down below, so figure 17, 17. If that drive, if the driveway length in example B was 20 feet, it would not have a visibility triangle. So.
What's?
Or it would have been.
From, from the first figure, the, the visibility figures up is included in the proposal right now. The, the text in the figure below are not included in the proposal right now. And so I'd have to write something up differently anyway.
Sorry, what's included? That's included now.
All of that is a component of the draft. I'd have to do something different for this part of it. To disassociate it from the RPD. Oops.
That's better.
I'm measuring this conservatively, the shortest distance to the garage door and the curb. Is your presumption is that the curb is at the right-of-way? If it is, you still would have something that could park over a sidewalk. Herb sidewalk, public pedestrian, property liner, right?
Well, yeah, but which do you, does it give you the option to choose which one? What if there's no sidewalk currently? But the curb is at the edge of the paved surface.
So you don't want the shortest, you want the longest. You want the longest distance between? No, you want the shortest.
The longest would would allow more. You can get closer with a longer designation, the shorter gives, makes it so that you, that's a minimal. If you do longest, then it becomes the maximum. Right? Or am I, did I flip that?
It's Monday. Well, our streets are so different, as Ben has pointed out, but I don't, no matter which way you cut it, the right of.
The shortest distance has to be 20 feet. There are other areas that could be 30 or longer, the shortest one at least has to be 20. It's then creates the ability for the visibility triangle. So the shortest distance to either the street curb, right-of-way line, property line.
Has to be 20 feet.
Because the property line could be here in the sidewalk here, and that's already created even more space. But in the worst-case scenario, your property line is the curb, you're still 20 feet. So that's.
But you want to make sure your building allows for that 20-foot.
Yeah.
I think two feet is very short. I think Vancouver, it's three or four. I think two feet's very short. You can't really plant any bushes or a fence in front of your house. That might be something to think about. 20 feet field too.
Yeah, I'm not sure where that height. I don't remember where the height came from. I think it was from some other. Something else.
I guess it's a small child in a ball.
I didn't make it up.
Yeah. That really does tie someone's hands when it comes to any kind of barrier.
Yeah, you gotta be careful about the fencing though, because I knew somebody down in Eugene that had to tear a brand-new fence down, because it was just, you know, a couple of little bit too close.
To the right-of-way? Well, that right-of-way is pretty important. The city wants to keep its right-of-way as it should. And the homeowner wants to do whatever they want, but there has to be some kind of the right-of-way is the right-of-way. You're not going to have people building in the right-of-way, even though some of them have. But so you want to maintain it, so that should be your minimum. Then you expand from that, right? But even if you, if this was a case where his garage door to right-of-way was 20 feet, then they can't even build a fence along there. No, right-of-way line, because they can't see, because they don't have two feet. So so much for little dogs in the yard or.
So we have two, two issues here to try to address. One is the visibility issue, and the other one is where they're parking and extending across the sidewalk or across the sidewalk into the right-of-way or into the, into the street itself, the paved street. So those are two, two different issues that you were trying to solve here. And I'm not so sure the minimum, the, that 20-foot driveway solves your extension in into the sidewalk or the road. It may help on visibility, but I'm not so sure it addresses.
I agree, but it was a, like I say, it was a compromise in that specific area because of the type of building that they wanted to do. So it was, if you subtract another four feet, that's limiting the square footage.
Do you still live up on Frank John?
No, I live on Vancouver, by Lasher.
She used to live in this house up on Frank John's and, you know, you can step out your door and be in the street.
Oh, yeah.
Well, maybe the, well, a simpler situations is to make it illegal to park across the sidewalk or in the street.
I think it is. Not for very long, otherwise you get a nuisance tag on you, feel right?
That doesn't do good.
We do.
Well, the, so.
Oh, good for you.
We can be there later on down, where we've got people that are blocking it and we can just constantly regulate them. They have no other option, so they're always going to end up parking there.
I don't know.
The zoning codes.
We need more beer.
Oh, zoning code anticipates creating a solution for people. And so just like, oh, that's gonna be wrong. It acknowledges that that problem will exist and creates a solution for it when the foundation is built. Whether that's 20 feet is really a solution or not, I think is what we're debating. It was better than 15 and it's way better than 10. Then it, and it, like I say, as I remember, it came off of that 20-foot visibility triangle. And we kept that 20 because that was just easy to have one thing's 20, but then you got this 24 number and what does that mean? And then we did the diagram, that's pretty, you know, pretty clear that that's what it is.
You, you have to have somewhere to start or to give people a notion of what they can or can't do. And I just think it's important to leave space for future sidewalks and not limit the city to not having sidewalks, because you've got houses that are right by the curb and nobody, and they can't park in the driveway that exists there. And they can't park on the road. You can't park on Lasher. It's, what, it's too lame, but it has no parking on either side. So you, you've got to either park on Vancouver Avenue, and some people actually do. I've seen them racing for their cars in the morning to go to work. They park on Vancouver Avenue because they live either in the condos or the townhomes there. Well, not the townhomes, maybe the condos.
Those condos have garages?
They do, they're probably using them for storage more than anything else. And they're not really huge.
No, I, I was guessing they weren't big.
Yeah.
Don't we have a minimum parking requirement for residents? For them to and we can do staff? Yeah. And so the garage is part of that too. So it's the garage is the parking space, the driveway is parked. That's pretty normal.
Yeah, I like the 20 foot. I don't like the two foot. I think that that reasons go up to three. I just looked on fences, it's like 4 to 6 is what they say, but three is kind of the minimum height for people's fences. Yeah, bushes are really hard.
Bushes.
Maintenance.
A structure.
There's a couple of places in town that you can't see around it, yeah.
When you're trying to make a left, and even if there's no cars parked there, those things, well, I love the bushes, don't get me wrong. But and on the right side too, as you're going on 14, right there by La Casa, that bush is there and it's, it's three feet, but it sure does cut your line of sight off. So, yeah, fences, bushes and that. You want a clean line of sight if you can have it.
Couple of folks up on Grabber that uses convex mirrors or whatever.
Love to see people.
Yeah, because their bushes are just so.
What do you want?
I want to know, I want somebody to summarize where they think we are on this. I think the question is, is more about fences and not shrubs, right?
Structures.
It's a visibility deal, right? So it's anything that would, so if you had a clear fence.
Chain link fence.
That wouldn't be an issue.
Then it wouldn't be an issue. But having something that's solid above two feet may limit your ability to look and see in that visibility.
You're sitting in your car though, with two feet field seats. You've got a lot of people who keep their bushes at two feet. No, they might keep them at three though.
It's, the, the regulation is structure and there's a definition for structure, which is anything constructed or erected. So this isn't regulating the bush there.
Should be.
Yeah, probably should be. I mean, if you go back and ask the question as to why we're doing this, it's to maintain
Visibility.
Visibility, so.
That could be a clarification. Sorry.
I can do that. I can just, you know, let me know what you guys want.
Something that was not necessarily part of the conversation. Just thinking about my bushes.
Where does it say structure? Yeah. It's in the zoning code table. And so page 65, the bottom note there. Every note structure should be located.
Oh, but you get a greater height might be allowed, right, and interfere with the use of substantial number? What was the point of all this?
Do you want to pursue a setback adjustment in the PR district?
Yes.
For for this effort, well, I'll just say as part of this effort, potential for council adoption in or wait until.
This, this is for driveways though, basically is what you're saying.
Yeah. Well, the setback reduction would be 10 and then we'd have accept for pedestrian visibility areas and driveways. Parking and garage.
But in this zone, there shouldn't really be any residents anyway, right?
Right, maybe that would still be like the feet, right? I think just consistency across the board, so it's not you know, because zoning changes and suddenly you have something that was built last year in one zone and now it gets rezoned. How did that happen? And why does he have to do that? I don't. You'll hear it.
So those seven properties that you mentioned, they still have the 20-foot?
Setback from the side, the, so on, let's, let's just so page 67, I'll put a packet.
Instead of beer, I think we should have Southern Comfort. This is making my head hurt. Oh, okay, nice picture. Okay.
If you join remote, you can have your.
But I thought, no, I want to see people. I'm getting my fourth shot tomorrow, so I feel safe.
Okay, so green are the, of course, the 28 total buildings in this district. Green means that they comply with the 20-foot setback, 25-foot setback department. Red means that they do not. If changed to 10 feet, this, the supply shed for the DOT way out on the edge of town would become conforming. There is no driveway directly into that, and so the driveway question is irrelevant to that one. The old Head Start building also has no driveway and it would now, it would conform if the 10-foot is there. The city sewer plant's lab building also does not have a driveway directly in, it would conform. The Grange building does not have a driveway directly into it and it would conform to the 10-foot setback. Hope that makes sense, makes sense in my head.
Would the Head Start building technically not, wouldn't that be a side yard for them right now? Because they access from.
It's the side of the house, but the front yard is measured to the front property line and there's no other street. So.
The street that drives, that accesses, that's not, that's not considered a street, it's not considered private access or anything like that. Sure doesn't feel like it should have, it should, it's, that should be considered a side yard for them, I would think. It's, that whole area is actually one whole thing that belongs to the county, right? So does it matter their, their entrances there by, oh, well, the Head Start building is now the housing and that. So they don't need access, they shouldn't, they don't want to access to the road, because for security reason.
The
Is it start?
The rundown I just gave was that if.
If we did the 10-foot setback with the 20-foot minimum, all of these would conform.
Yeah, if regardless of anything we discuss or decide on with driveways, they would then conform. We'd still have these other buildings that wouldn't conform, all of which have essentially a zero-foot setback.
Right. Yeah, but they all have sidewalks in front of them too. Right. Because there's the sidewalk in front of the Grange, there's a sidewalk in front of the housing.
South side, they all have sidewalks here.
Yeah.
There is no sidewalk at this one, there is no sidewalk.
Well, that, that one that you have east of or west of town, it's, it's the gravel and the gas and that, and it has an entryway. Why do they even need a setback? Because everything's further back, there's nothing here close to 14.
At some, somebody said the new setback of 25 feet there.
Can they build single-family residences in the PR district? So this doesn't matter, right? Yeah, basically.
You can still have a fleet here.
And a garage.
We've got the developer. We've got the development on the the old county property. That's residential. Yeah, different zone CR.
CR.
Did it change? It it just, oh, it always was for them, so.
And they have setbacks or other things.
That's a different green. I thought that was like water and I got it.
My thought about bushes and fences goes away entirely. I think, considering the zoning, there's not many people in their homes, probably.
What's the thing going up next to the assisted living?
That's the difference, so, yeah, that's the one that I thought.
That's the light green up there.
It's a different green.
The peninsula, yeah.
That's the frog green instead of the teal green.
The not redacted, redacted green. So do you need a synopsis so we can give you a thumb?
Uh, yes, please.
Mister Ben, can you do a synopsis? I'm too new to do that.
How about your game? Okay, so, um. Uh, let's back into it. Have a. Minimum length for driveways in the PR district, so it's consistent with the other districts that have that. Of twenty twenty or twenty five, I don't know how to do that. I didn't, I didn't hear anything.
You mean the minimums?
Yeah, whether the actual number is twenty or twenty five, I didn't hear.
Unless for the purpose of visibility.
That's for the purpose of not blocking, physically blocking the sidewalk.
But remember, it's businesses, not residential.
Yeah, and none of those buildings are going to change. They're all still going to be unconforming, no matter what you do tonight. They're just going to be, what is the term, grandfathered?
Well.
They're not gonna have to suddenly do anything, right?
Nine of them current, yes, the remaining five. Won't have to do anything like that.
Yeah, so.
I have no problem with the twenty foot setback and driveway.
One of you, which would be the consistent length.
I think that's five years ability, but I don't think it it solves your problem of extending potentially into a sidewalk. Or the road.
I don't think any of them, they all all have sidewalks.
So, here's another tool, um. Process management tool, instead of this like three-part system would be a fist of five, so zero, one, two, three. To show your support for it. If it's zero or one, that means no go, let's talk about this some more. So if if we were doing that, would your um note be a no go?
You know, if our goal here is to keep a vehicle from parking in a driveway and extending over a sidewalk in the street. I think we have more work to do.
But it's not.
If if that's not our goal, if we're simply worried about visibility here, if that is our goal, then then this is fine.
And is it not also consistency throughout? Isn't that part of it?
That would be, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's also part of this consistency in the zoning.
I mean, I I I would like to see a longer driveway also, but again, it was, it was a compromise with what. That particular zoning district and what they were trying to do.
Yeah, and I and I'm fine with that. I think we just recognize that that is not gonna solve the problem of cars that extend over.
But those are mostly in residential, they're not here in the PR district. Is that correct?
Well, it could be, but it it may not be, Mary, you know, I mean, we don't know what those structures should look like, or they might be modified in the future. Um, you know, if we, and if we're okay with that, I think we're okay with that. But let's not assume that we have solved the problem of cars that extend over sidewalks. Or extend the street because I don't think we have.
Uh, as August puts it, it's a a compromise in this place, the, in this zone. The negotiation start at twenty five feet already, sort of starting at fifteen feet. And so it could be easy in this zone to just maintain that driveway length at twenty five.
They are talking five feet, so.
It wouldn't be consistent, um, you know. Let's throw that out and see if it has more support, twenty five feet as the length. Does that have more support than the twenty foot? I think that would then lead to, uh, again, the consistency of. Let's push the other one to twenty five from twenty.
Not to be a devil's advocate, August, but. Some zones are going to be different. You're not going to be consistent in everything.
Well, the consistency is. For safety, which should be regardless of what zone it is. And the other one was for being able to safely put your vehicle into your property.
Yeah, I'm not so sure driveway only. Is the answer to that problem. I think it is simply state making it. Illegal for someone to block a sidewalk with their vehicle when it's parked in a driveway.
I think that should be your bottom line.
That's the, that's really what you need.
Yeah, one, one is a building requirement, and the other one.
Is an enforcement thing.
Yeah, and I think the building requirement here focuses on visibility, the other one.
Well, and your public works director said she's gonna enforce.
We already have the ability to enforce that, if it's right away, so.
In Carson, that was.
And the public recreation district. The buildings in there are not private, they're they're either government or or business, right?
Governments or nonprofit museum.
Yeah.
Like I say, I'm I'm good with putting that number further because that just makes it safer. But it would. Institute kind of a drive to change that in the other zones. Also, and that's where you'll start to get a little bit of pushback because that's reducing square footage on multifamilies and stuff like that.
Well, we did, uh, we covered this a little bit when we did that, uh, outbuilding setback up on, uh.
Yeah, SR district.
Yeah, and didn't we come to the conclusion that. You know, everybody. Else would be where they are.
It was consistency across those.
But those were all residential.
Yes.
This is not residential, this is a public recreation.
Well, I, I'm, yeah.
I think twenty five feet sounds really good. It's seven fifteen. I I.
You know, I I agree, Mary, I think, I think we need to dispatch this, I'm, you know, either table it or 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 come to some. Some endpoint of the conversation because. I think it goes back to, you know, basically, why are we doing this? And if it's for visibility. I'm not so sure you gain, you might gain a little bit more with that. But I'm not sure you do, and and we're not talking about approaching it right away or across the sidewalk. So maybe it's, it's good as it is.
Is that a motion?
I think he's still talking about the twenty five feet, the original twenty five feet. Oh, no, I think we do want to reduce that to ten. Except for driveways, right?
That's what I was hearing.
But keeping the driveway twenty five is what Ben's talking about. Sorry, I keep saying Ben.
Ben.
Probably look a lot.
Yeah, I just love that man bun thing you got going on.
Are you good with that?
I'm good with that.
So do you need a thumbs up, thumbs down from them?
Now I'm confused.
Twenty five.
Twenty or the twenty five? So at twenty, we had, um, not full agreement from Jeff. And at twenty five, we have not full agreement from at least August. I didn't get a full count across around the room, so. It wasn't that I didn't agree, it was with the caveat that that opens the conversation for we need to push that in all the other districts also. What I might try to do in, because I have to rewrite something here. Um, and so where I I could insert something like the parking of fleet vehicles. The assumption is that those are longer than a normal passenger car. And there's some rationale that's into the discussion.
Yeah.
I would agree with that. And weren't you just saying as part of your shoreline master plan that there was all these different. Types of crafts? Are are you headed down that road with that? You don't like it, I don't think, really, and I don't think it's necessary personally.
I don't either. I think it's just a vehicle is is fine. I mean, any vehicle is parking, parked across the sidewalk is a problem.
Yeah. Anything with four wheels on it.
The reason why, the reason why it would be added here is that what August is is worried about is, um. Uh, the developers' rights to build in those residential sites. And, um, some future, uh, application to change setbacks. That developer would have to then fight for that right to, for that that five foot.
So you're thinking Pandora's box.
Against twenty five feet, and we just add that little breadcrumb in here when you're making that comparison. Well, this one is for fleet vehicles. That's why we increased it here. You're not gonna have fleet vehicles at. It provides that.
I know, I'm really not helping this go faster, I'm sorry.
You know, Ben, you could leave it at twenty feet then.
Again, I, okay, I'm I'm okay with. We can always revisit this later. And so then the question is, we want to proceed to potential adoption, just change. In May, or leave this to a real later discussion. Proceed to adoption.
Yeah, that's it, so.
I don't think I have a vote, right?
Okay.
Did you get a green dot?
There's a change that needs to happen, but we made, we made it this far. I. Let's, uh, jump to, let's jump to sharing the screen. And, um, some easy ones, really low hanging ones, so, uh, date corrections.
Well, we should definitely discuss that.
Are on this page and this page here, and so is that a green dot? Date corrections on B.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not sure. Guess what that does for us too, is that that is, takes care of that.
I think that's up there.
So, um. SMP integration occurs on page two with with a reference to actions like. Uh, page eight with taking out the date reference, um, to the.
What did you learn?
It's the one that did, I included the wrong comp plan attachment to that one.
You don't have the right one.
Just what's being shown on this. So this one, um, could be, can put back correction. Let's see both of it. Okay, um, where else am I at? Uh, eight, page eighteen is this reference to the restoration. Plan, shoreline restoration plan.
Is that different than shoreline master plan?
It's a component of the program, I guess, but yes, it is different, under different cover. Page twenty two, uh, is a move. A little bit of rewriting and a move from what happened in the downtown waterfront to a more citywide.
Are you striking that?
That's an addition.
You're saying shoreline master program?
Those are the programs.
That was planned.
Okay, global review, so make sure it's planned, it is planned. For A, two, and three. Uh, that would be so deletion of where that came from to, from the downtown waterfront to the citywide focus. And then really paring this one down. Um, to to focus on how we manage the downtown waterfront lands. And so, uh, we wanna manage them to the benefit of the community and with these tactics of protecting, enhancing, maintaining natural. Uh, scenic, historic architectural and recreational qualities along the river, that is something that had been below. It's moved out to here. Uh, against State Avenue, uh, consider repurposing the Tishner Building for other, uh, purposes, retail logic specifically. And encourage development of a landscape keeping plan for the fairgrounds. Though, but where did those go from? Those came from below, um, where they were just separately hanging out, so, um, encourage. Development of landscaping plan, consider repurposing the Tishner Building.
Yeah, those were when we did the comp plan, uh, that was one of the things that came out of there. Or a few of them, the Tishner Building, cuz it was not supposed to be be built there. Many, many moons ago, but it got done, and that was supposed to be left for, uh, residential. Or condos and public type stuff, uh, not a production facility.
The other ones here on integration are just this cleanup change to, so it's protect and facilitate. Encourage enhancement of the co. Um, and then within the zoning code, uh, that's where we're consolidating all the uses. To boating and. Overwater boating facilities and overwater structures, which is the use category within the SMP. And, uh, then, and this, these did make into document, um.
Well, rock cold is a non.
And that's in the SMP.
Okay. You can't use motorized vehicles.
Makes sense.
The. Boating, uh, facility and overwater structure has a a description that references the SMP. And then in each of the zones, instead of having a conditional permitted prohibited. Uh, use associated, it just references the SMP and has a note on that, and so that's the integration, uh, component there. Anything besides plan to note, uh, that you want to see changed for next time? Plan for the versus program.
Ask that question again.
Uh, so this one won't get a green dot because I've got to reconcile plan and program. And so is there anything else about that description that should change before you're comfortable recommending approval of that?
I don't think so, no.
I didn't hear anything. I'll scroll up again here for shoreline access that appears at, um, seven. Four eight point seven, uh, which is deleted, uh, proposed for deletion, um, only because it has been moved up to. Four eight one. Only because it has been moved up to four A one here, the gathering place. And this just focuses on. Enhancing shoreline access in Stevenson area. And the existing. Objective. This for A one look okay.
So a planning isn't involved with that?
Yeah, I'm just asking, just the administration, public works.
So this one had just said public works prior. Four and seven said administration.
It's a good observation though about planning not being on that. Why? It's a development of a large amphitheater. Seriously? How's that those words?
Yeah, to me it sounds like planning.
Erosion cinema control. I mean, maybe, but. That sounds like CIPA.
Oh, yeah.
I I can't justify why planning is excluded.
You add it. We would never want to exclude you.
Well, for something like that, when you're. It would come to planning.
Right? You don't want me deciding how big that amphitheater could be.
Well, the zoning. Even the shoreline master, wouldn't it bring it back to the point?
Yeah, I I mean, again, I can't justify why it's not there. It just wasn't there.
It's easy, just type it in.
Okay, I needed directions to do that.
Type it in.
All right. For A, two through six is where shoreline management comes in. That's where it consolidates. Management aspects in one spot and removes other.
That's what we dealt dealt with last meeting.
So. Two goes away totally, three becomes the umbrella for others. Two doesn't go away totally. Two was moved. Some of two. Must be moved down. Protection, maintenance, and it was moved from here to three, three houses what had been. Five and six. And four is also.
And you're not going to take public works out because it looks like it's crossed out then. Okay.
Got one thumbs up.
Ongoing is split now.
It'll be on one line after the. I got two.
That water is coming down. Maybe you need new eaves. Sounds like a public works thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's really flowing from someplace.
And document maintenance, we cover a lot of those. Already. This top one is really the catchall for little things that need to change. In this case, that's the responsible departments cross referencing here at the end of the document.
You better add your planning section. Going to be part of that amphitheater whether you want to or not.
Not quite sure where they would put it.
About little fifteen foot strip. Okay, so there's all of that. Oh, I'll jump to the written packet. For some of that, this is where we have definition for shoreline master. Both plan and program. To the. Zoning code definitions, that's on page fifty four of the packets.
The packet they have.
That they have and then pages. Fifty, I guess they're all just on page fifty six where boating facility or overwater structure. Becomes what had them four, five, six, seven and nine. Okay, I've got two changes identified through the course of discussion, adding another objective to planning's. Responsibilities at the end of the document and doing a global review of. Versus program. With those changes, is that ready to move forward?
You're the only holdout.
Which one was this?
The catchall. Including what you're on that page.
So this is boarding facility or overwater structure, but. It is what you've deleted here includes basically boats as well. And that doesn't seem to.
That's one that I'm happy to delete because that's a.
Why would that be?
Right. Yeah, it gives somebody a zoning violation for a rowboat.
Is boat just a catchall? I mean, I never see windsurfing and kiteboarding mentioned.
Backs, sailboards, paddleboards.
Yeah, non-motorized watercraft.
So that's in there while you're reading that section, I want you to. Look at the cable pole system. That was a. Planning Commission interpretation that was made in twenty twelve that never was incorporated into the zoning code. And so cable pole systems are fixed courses. For weight borders. And so you latch yourself onto a cable. And it toes you around in a circle and there jumps in in there. The planning commission in twenty twelve was asked to interpret the zoning code to see if that was contemplated as a use. Because it's a non-motorized watercraft. And they said. Yeah, I guess so. As long as that. Pole is from a motor on a fixed location on the ground and not on the water.
I think the case would object. I don't know. How would you, even if it was stationary on the land? You would still have to have. System of cables out there. And there's enough cables in the water that need to be removed. We don't need anymore on top of that. You know, there's still crap out there from the old no hon. Yeah, I mean, like this thick cable.
Do the cables go away when they're not using?
I don't know. You you've reached the depths of my knowledge on a cable system. The other interpretations that were performed, one was by the zoning administrator in the. Commercial districts stating that had we considered residential outbuildings, garages. When we did that use table, then we would have considered them allowed as an accessory use. And so that's. Changed within the that use table. And then your interpretation from last month or the month before about. Prohibiting travel trailers in the R two district is included. In our periodic update here.
As residential. Not that we don't want to see any travel trailers at all.
Those three use interpretations, is that ready to move forward?
What's the categories reliant on the SMP embraces over like overwater residences, floating homes and board vessels? Despite residential aspects of such uses. What does that mean?
Other balloon home. The, so this changes to the transportation, communication utility uses. And so if you're looking for. A resident, like, can I live in a houseboat on the cove? You might turn to. The residential uses section. But the. This just acknowledges that, hey, we thought about that and they're covered by the SMP. So go to the SMP.
Okay.
And in the SMP, they're protected. No output.
Gloria just keeps her little thing out there as a protest.
She sold that.
She did. Is it gone?
I I well, it floated away and then we. Tracked it down as a derelict vessel.
Talking about the barge?
Yeah.
Yeah, I almost bought that.
Yeah. And then the. We found out that it wasn't a derelict vessel because the title had been transferred to somebody. And so definitely track down somebody. Somebody who lashed it to a shoreline elsewhere and go and then begin it again and track them down again. Anyway.
I think somebody else.
Otherwise, you'd still see it out there.
Okay, then we're all good. In addition to the boating specific uses, we did change the transportation uses. Railroad facility I already talked about and won't spend more time. Other ones are parking uses. And so we created this three, three tiers of parking. Public parking with a description of that accessory parking with a description of that and non-accessory parking with a description of that. This would replace a. Use in the residential listed in the residential table right now, garages or storage building for parking of commercial vehicles. And that's where we consider that a non-accessory parking area. The the use tables in. Later in the code to reflect these changes and and try to be consistent. Those are the transportation ones. And so. Let you kind of review that and start thinking about that. The utility changes. Word tells me that staffed and unstaffed is a better combination than manned and unmanned. And so there's a change for that. There's also a change for. From this mouthful of descriptive words within the use category. And then a second mouthful for additions to that. It would be a change to a public works facility as the allowed or permitted. Use and description of what a public works facility is. Where you had this other use category for additions to. What would now become public works facilities. We just add that as a note to the table to say that if you're going to expand, it needs to be a conditional use. Instead of. The way it's currently. Which is also conditional use. So those changes would be the last we would consider on this one before moving forward.
I was communication and information different.
The communication. Information occurs at the. Top of that table. So transportation, communication, information, utility uses.
Okay, so just pull all those in. Okay.
Comes up for me then.
Okay, yep. All right. Good job.
Tired them out.
We, the 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 last set of decisions, we talked. About how to roll this out to the public. In advance of this, I sent the. Setback change to representatives of all those seven different property owners and then also Mary. Because she has an interest in her range building that's on one of those properties. I've done the state environmental protection act. Threshold determination of non-significance for this, that it would not have a significance impact on the environment. We are awaiting written comments on that. There do. Later this week, I believe. And. This is advertised as a public hearing. So in this case, it's. Supplement that in any way for this. This discussion. And so.
How would you supplement?
The packets, and I'll find the exact page, also includes your public involvement's framework. From the plant commissions bylaws. This framework was recently adopted and was adopted in response to. Public concern that they didn't have enough voice. And so beginning on seventy three. We've got what that framework looks like at a visual. Plugging in from the menu of options in seventy four and seventy five is an easy way to look at that. We want to do. What you all did for the SR district setbacks was to send it's send the flyer to each property owner. In the district and adjacent to the district. In this case, in district has already received notice of this adjacent to the district.
I'll lead off. I think this is largely. Other than than the setback question that we talked about. It's basically a house cleaning. Exercise. I mean, you're trying to ensure consistency between your comprehensive plan and your shoreline management plan. I mean. I don't, I don't see anything here that is. Particularly significant in terms of policy change. You know, particularly since we've we've had. You know, particularly since we've, we've had the shoreline management plan out there and it, and it's been. Fairly well aired in terms of its preparation and its review and its repeated review.
Well, and the setback is only for the PR district, right?
Yeah, and it is. And I think you've already basically covered that with your notice. So. You know, Ben, I, I'm not so sure that. That we need an extensive public outreach of this because we're not changing basic policy direction or requirements.
As long as you're not doing any policy changes, uh, you know, I don't, I don't see it either. I agree with you on. People had a lot of input in into this, the SMP stuff and that for a lot of. And I don't know what Bernard thinks if he's still alive up there. Uh, but yeah, I think it's mostly cleaning up and. Making consistent across the board. But if we find you changed. It's going to come to the city council, right?
Yeah, it'll go to the city.
So there'll be another.
Need to verify. I think the complaint amendments require a public hearing of both, but I need to check into that.
Yeah, I, I think they do, but it wouldn't hurt just to make sure.
Okay. Good. I'm satisfied with that and ready to allow our guests to honor to. Take over the meeting, right?
Wait, you've got something?
So we are closing that part of it and moving into um the. Uh, continued review of what we have. So uh, where we're at with the top half of this, we also have an established public involvement. Uh, expectations for that. That's fine right now. Our goal right now is to. Um, get enough of these to green where we know really what the scope of everything is. Write the public opportunity to comment on that. Uh, you got many of them to agree uh the last time. There were several that said. Hey, we've got a new public works director and they can explain to us what level of service standard we need in the different parts of that. So she is here to participate in that discussion. Uh, also the discussion about stormwater standards and tying land development to the capital improvement program. You requested some specific changes uh that are identified with the red dots and tried to make all those uh in. In the document and and highlight them where appropriate. Septic tank was a discussion that we have that it didn't quite, things weren't tracking with. When they should be allowed or whether they should be um conditionally allowed. And that's uh where I heard the most there. Um, and so I'll jump straight to that. That's. Currently.
Septic tanks are on my to-do list. Carson is doing their subarea planning now.
Okay, the top of page ninety-eight of your packet. Sets out a, an objective to manage the urbanization through the expansion of the sewer system. It had two tactics uh that said condition or that said. Permit septic systems only when provision of sewer service is technically infeasible within. And uh initially this was proposed to move it down to a three. Um, in the discussions, um, there was request to really tighten that up. Um, and how that that read. And so it's conditionally allow uh installation of septic systems. Until sewer service.
Comes into place.
And is that there? And so. And then there's the untouched tactic about provides land development regulations prohibit septic system installations in areas where. Uh, sewer service is feasible.
How do you, how do you figure out if we have failed septic systems? Good question. I think the homeowner knows. Cause so septic systems actually fail over time. Yeah. So as your pipe clogs, 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 clogs.
Yeah.
Um, they'll start backing up into.
Well, some people have are on city sewer, but they had septic fields. And now those drain into Kanaka here.
So the treatment area for the drain, so septic systems are typically made of a tank.
Yeah.
Which goes to drain field. Drain fields will have. Um, pipes or these uh. They're like half pipes now um that they're making, but those fail over time. And when I say fail, it's they clog. You know, slowly, slowly, slowly they clog, clog, clog. And so at some point. Um, it's intact, it's completely clogged and it will begin to back up into your home. So that's how one would know that it fails.
Yeah.
But the treatment area for a septic system is actually more like a foot to three feet depending on your soil type. So. That's how they get those setback kind of requirements.
Well, like I know we've uh gotten as developers have gotten waivers and people in Stevenson within the limit, uh, city limits have gotten. Waivers for septic fields because they, they're not near sewer yet. So is there a provision like? Okay, if the sewer system comes next year, do they have to join? Or is it five years down the line, ten years down the line? Because they've just put in a. We put a new septic field in our house, forty grand. And it was, that's a lot of money. I'm sure it will outlast me, but uh, you know, so how do we address that?
The, the easy answer to this question is that. We want to focus on how it should be. And um, then we'll set up the regulatory system to, to make it how it should be. So in your statement, I hear you saying that there should be some sort of.
A phased in approach. If, if uh, and. A, a question I've had and I've discussed it with ecology and they can't give me a good answer is how many septic fields is enough septic fields for your community? Yeah, because uh. You know, for example, Carson has twenty-six hundred people plus whatever, and they're all on septic. So eventually there has to be a. I, I mean, I think there has to be a limit as to how much is enough crap bowling uh going downhill? Especially if it goes into your waters. Or does it? Or how do you measure it?
Yeah, it doesn't. So when they construct it, and you probably had this happen when they came in, they dug a test pit, they reviewed the soils. And so they said, oh, you know, if there's a water table or some sort of impermeable barrier, those, oh, you can't put your septic tank here or your septic drain field here. The other thing they make you do is they make you have like designate additional area for your second one. Assuming that your first drain field will last so long, the second one that goes here, at some point there won't be land to add drain fields. And so I think that's probably.
It's eighteen thousand square feet, I think, for a single family.
Might be, yeah.
Yeah. And you can do the smaller ones too, I guess, the pressurized ones, something. There's different ones. But it, it just to me, it's the becomes inevitable that you do have a limit. And what is that limit? And how are, is the city going to? You, you know, we, yes, we're getting sore here, we're getting there, but there's quite a, a large area that doesn't have sore yet, right? And maybe we need a picture of that so we see it. And what are we going to do then? How are we going to?
Yeah, what I see here, so we say we conditionally allow installation of septic systems until it's available. Then what? Well, yeah, so now it's available. Do we kick them off? Like I, I'm not clear from this. And maybe it's someplace else, like what that means.
It's not someplace else, but that, that captures the discussion here. Conditionally.
Yeah.
And.
That says when it becomes avail, the condition is when it becomes available, you will switch.
That, I think that's, that was, I think, implied based on discussion.
Well, it was conditional into, you know, also the time period. So. We're granting you this, but within this time period of sewer being available, you have to make a connection. So it's not pinning you down to two years. It's kind of.
Well, this is a comprehensive plan too. It's a general vision. And the specifics in terms of how you make that transition. Those aren't going to be here, but the intent is, in other words, if you simply say we're going to allow septic systems. And we're going to allow them to continue. Once sewers available, why would you ever put a sewer in? Or why would anybody ever book up?
Yeah.
So the intent here is to say, when sewers available, yes, there should be some direction to connect to that sewer. In terms of the timeframe or cost sharing, et cetera. You know, I think that's down the pike. That's a decision that we didn't make. But I think it was. Yeah, no, but you know, I, I think we, we still wanted to make it clear that if, if you're gonna, if you're gonna get away from. Septic systems ultimately. There has to be that conversion point. Where no one's going to invest the money to put a sewer in.
Maybe we're missing one um about. Phasing out septic systems and um. Convert existing septic users to. Are we, is that what we're missing here?
Yeah, I think that, I think we probably are, Ben. Um, I mean, because this talks about allowing additional, it doesn't say anything about what already uses.
And you don't want to make it a hardship for people too. I mean, they've just put in a new septic field and suddenly the sewer comes up the two years later. And uh, so you know, you don't want to just hit them over the head.
That's why we discussed the timeframe.
Existing septic systems, you know, that have been there for ten, fifteen years. I think the way around that is as they fail and you have to re-permit. Uh, that would key into is sewer available? Conditionally, can you either renew your drain field if that's the issue or look connect? And maybe the cheaper to connect than it is to renew your drain field.
So do we know how many septic fields we actually have that are in use right now in the city limits?
Three hundred and twenty-six.
Oh, give me a.
That was like, yeah.
Can, do you?
No, but um, you're right. So I, I couldn't even go to the.
See that, uh, so we don't know and we don't know their status either. And I have to tell, our field was forty plus years old back home. Our, our farmhouse burned down. And uh, when they dug it up, there was no concrete. It, it was gone, except for the tank. Yeah, the tank. Uh, so it had just disappeared. So I, and, and we were using it. We were, you know, the guy came and did his thing and whatever. And, and it was still, the top part was still there. So um. There are probably failed fields out there that we don't know about. And I don't think that there's any. Thing that ecology does to say your septic field has to be inspected at least every five years.
Yes.
Oh, there is. Right?
I think it is. Well.
Or three?
Annually, but it's, you know, it's on a fairly regular basis, you know, and that's a departmental.
Do they enforce it? No, probably not. Everyone under staffed.
Yeah. Well, and, and how do, how do you know here in city of Stevenson, uh, does ecology uh come to you or? Are, are people, I, I, I do not believe that anybody's doing their uh three-year thing. I, I really seriously don't. There might be some good person out there who pays attention to the red, but I seriously don't think. Most people. Especially city people, when they come to areas where there's septic fields, they don't know how to treat their septic fields.
Let's try to move forward again. So what do we want? So what you're asking for is do we want a third thing that covers that?
I, I think septic fields are important to your, to your environment.
So just, just as a, like kind of a, a point, the city doesn't actually. Do septic permits, that's county, but it flows through the city in. The permitting process. So it has to be a part of the permit, but it's the county that does it.
So the county knows all the septic fields.
So then doesn't know anything about septic and that's okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I am curious a little bit about, you know, we took about feasibility and I was just thinking, there's a neighbor just across the way. Uh, and his home has is like along this new main D. But in order for him to get. Um, to drain his house, he would have to like go over the creek or under the creek. So for him, it is available. He's got septic on this side. But he can't get it there. So I don't know that we want to get rid of feasibility entirely, but I'm not, I wasn't here for that conversation. So. Somewhat curious why we got.
But did everybody not agree that once septic or once sewer is available? There needs to be some, some type of regulation on timeframe for you to hook up, correct? That was that.
And you covered that with your condition, right? When you say conditionally allow.
Yeah, it was in the part of that your condition.
Yeah.
So um. I just updating the note here, that still needs work about um phasing in in some way, next thing.
It would be made clear though, so we would get the plans, the building permit, right? And the building permit application say, oh, we don't have sewer. Uh, as an option, we have a septic system, we want to do septic. So we would put in there, this will be conditionally allowed until we extend to your area and. Yeah. So I don't know that you need to, I, I don't know that that needs to be changed.
Cause it wasn't. It's not clear now. Um, let's.
Not going to get.
Allowed with conditions.
Yeah.
That's going to be a hard one though. I had a friend in Vancouver, um, basically directly across from the airport. It was an old little place. I didn't realize they had sewer. It kind of shocked me. And septic or septic, I'm sorry, sewer came in and it was going to cost him twenty-five thousand dollars to get up to city sewer. And I mean, they were on.
Um, but yeah.
Social security. I mean, you don't, I mean, that's a hardship.
Well, that's why when you phase it in, you, you can do the, like, they can go in, it can go on there. Uh, what is that term? When they can pay every month? A little bit and it goes with the house.
Right.
So that they.
Yeah, that's a whole nother subject. Yeah, it's just, it's going to be a sensitive subject.
Well.
They have failed, they have failed the septic fields up in Carson and it has, it was a issue because of E coli. And people got sick. And, and there, it wasn't just one. There were a few. And yes, it was going to cost tens of thousands of dollars, but what other choice do you have?
Back to the PUD up there about trying to find a new water source for Carson.
Yes, that too. Well, that's a whole thing.
So what else do you need us to do on that one?
Um, I heard enough, I think, to know that we need some draft language to chew on. Is there anything else that prevents you from? Um, being ready to turn that. Um, septic concept.
What are you thinking about in terms of, you're saying it needs a little work then? Basically recognize we're going to conditionally allow them. But we also need to talk about where they are currently located.
When, what, so the program to create the the regulation will need a lot of um guidance and public input and and maps. By how you find these. And we're providing the breadcrumbs to say, alright, that needs to find a way to connect existing ones. That's what we were adding tonight.
Right.
To conditionally allow where it's not likely.
Right.
And to prohibit where it is. Those are the three thumbs up. Cool. That's one of nineteen. Um, well, actually not nineteen.
Level of service standard?
And yeah, let's jump into level of service standards. So um the concept here is not only that we want water, like as as people here, we want water, we want telecom and we want sewer and we want streets and sidewalks. We want them at the specific level of service. And so the um draft in here uh includes specific levels of service. When this was submitted by staff in twenty eighteen, um, there, those levels of service are indicated here in bold saying I am on page ninety nine and one hundred.
The very last page right there.
So I gave you some more thought. Is everyone familiar with what level service kinda means?
I think it's been mentioned a few times at other meetings, but not sure.
Yeah, so it's very, very common, especially when it stands for like transportation. Um, and it basically is like a way to measure what people are experiencing when they drive. So it would be like this, how long you waited in light, given like you know, certain amount of traffic. Ultimately, a traffic thing. I think, though, I gave this some more thought then after, you know, he was kinda pulling me into kind of the conversation. I don't know if this is the document to say level of service, A, B, C, or to provide these sorts of specifics. I don't know that we would be consistent with our standards or you know, what we're able, kinda able to provide at, you know, at this point.
It is in the transportation. Level service, that's where it is talked about.
Should be, yeah. But I think the place for that would be in our standards. So I think that that's probably the vehicle we, vehicle we'd wanna use.
Is that what we're just talking about, just transportation?
Yeah, there's some for like water, but it's it's kinda the same.
Level of service.
Yeah. I don't, but is it, is, I mean, to the not the normal person, but to the, to the, to the layperson, if you were saying that. They would probably think of the things that make your life easy, right? That make you civilized, that you have roads, you have water, drinking water.
Those are the services, yeah.
Yeah.
The specific.
Is that what you mean in this document? Rather than what your public works director here is saying, the the actual level service. It will have to be defined someplace.
Yeah, so the, it's a philosophical, philosophical choice that you have, whether to define it in the comprehensive plan and then build all your regulatory systems and capital improvement plans to meet something that's defined here. Or whether you punt and wait until you have all the info of those different plan planning efforts and assessments that go into that to establish what you can do. It's you have the choice. Complan previously said um
Because it wasn't, uh, when we were doing the comp plan in twenty thirteen, it wasn't specifics like oh, we have to have uh this type of road and this and that. It just, these, these are the things we want to make our community nice and livable. And safe.
So the at that point, it's uh the base provision of future public facilities and utilities upon financial cost and adequacy of desired levels of service. And so it was pumped to the, the future. The, the amendment request from previous public works director was to put in that he was a part of, um was to put him in here and putting him in, in the comprehensive plan. Itself uh is in line with um uh, the state's guidance. So for the fast growing large jurisdictions, they are required to put the specific levels of service in this document and build a system toward it. That's not a direct challenge to what you're saying, because we have the ability to do one or the other. Having it's in the comp plan makes it a little bit easier. Okay, so if if we go forward and we adopt, uh we recommend and the council uh adopts these changes, there's gonna be this uh expectation for level of service. And there will be lag time before our standards or our plans um are definitely in align with this. In that lag time, there are certain applications that'll come in that say the project needs to be consistent with your comprehensive plan. And so you would have this to rely on if you're confident in these numbers. And I think Carolyn has um, good reasons for you not to be confident in these numbers and and why you might want to punch. So I I hope I explained that difference well enough for you to at least chew on.
Yeah. I mean, so if you just start at the top one, arterial streets, level service D or better. That seems like really, that would be difficult not to achieve. Right? So cause level D is really not great. Um, but I think it's consistent with like the county. So the county's got a number of level services that they based on their roads. You know, your sidewalks, both sides of arterial streets, item as full walking routes. That doesn't even do like level service, really, like that would be piece of that. Adequate transit service at or above the current operating level service. So that's even more vague, like, so I think what we really want is there's until we truly understand like what that means, I don't know that we can kind of put it in here. Cause like you said, we want the, we want them nice plates, right? And so, does that mean that you have ten seconds um, as you waited a stop sign? And does that mean you have three seconds as you wait as a stop sign? That's would be the level service on arterial street that we'd be talking about. And so it probably worth, be worthwhile, this is where you do wanna put it. To show you what those are and say, what do you want? Like, what sounds reasonable?
A part of the problem too, I think, by saying, simply saying, level of service D or better. It's not a very citizen friendly document. I mean, what is that? What does that mean? I mean, I look at that and it, it has no meaning. How, how would I respond to that if I were a member of the public and I was coming here and saying, you know, that's good. I have no idea what that is.
Yeah. The person doing your traffic analysis would know, though. So they would be able to take that and run with it. But would they look here for it? I don't think so. Like, I think they'd wanna be looking the standards to see what we actually require.
That's why they look in the comp plan would say we have safe streets. And to a, to a regular person, that would mean that you were abiding by the rules, whatever those rules are. If they're safe streets or what, whatever. So, yeah, I think you you need a kind of a clearer definition of what you mean by level of service in the comp plan. And the level of service in the transportation plan. And how it's defined and that. You you don't want the, those acronyms to leak over that people don't understand.
Well, and you could, I mean, we could put them in here, but I just don't know if we know what they are yet. So, and I think that it could take some time to know, to truly know what we, what we want. But I think what we're trying to say is we want it to be, you know, the highest feasible level. So a level service comparable to cities that we feel are safe. I mean, I I have no idea, but if there's gotta be a way to be a little bit more vague and or to the level of service identified in the, in the construction standards, I think. I don't know.
Yeah, it just, it just seems to me that, you know, this, this document is that sort of broad vision as to what we wanna have in our community. And you know, it is more qualitative in terms of what we say we want in here. But it's qualitative so that the citizens of the city can say, yeah, uh, th- that's what I, that's what I understand and that's what I want. The technical application or achievement of that is another tier down, which is more detailed in my mind, is not comprehensive. And I, I, I was, I looked at the water standard. And I thought, gosh, when I was doing research on, on the water standard, we were looking at anywhere from fifty to sixty PSI. Was almost standard in terms of residential water systems. And this is striving to provide at least thirty PSI. It seems to me to be, you know, I don't know where that that comes from, you know, and I just
That's one I do know where it comes from and it's the minimum Department of Health allows. And so this is stating the minimum. Easily state the minimum.
So we say, you know, still to encourage collection or recycling disposal, consider solid waste reuse and biomass energy projects. Like, that's not, that's very, very broad, but yet down here, we're saying you know, all of these very specific street types need to be this very specific level of service. So to me, it seems like it's a little bit disconnected with the um, with the detail of the rest of the plan. And and I don't think it's a bad idea. I think it should be explored and definitely utilized in other things that we got in the works right now, but.
Well, can you say like, see the transportation plan for more uh detail?
As we're, as we're looking at the overall structure, and this is, this is the counterpoint to what you're saying, and I'm not advocating for it, I'm just trying to explain. As you look at the overall structure, at some point, the city is gonna have to go through and say, what's our, what's what's real for us? What do we wanna see for levels of service? Uh, is it D, is it C, is it B at an intersection? What do we want? And so, part of the decision you're making right now is, do we want to have that discussion at a comprehensive plan stage? Or just wait until the transportation planning effort stage, or maybe wait later until the um, public works standards are adopted. It's gonna happen at some point. When do we wanna wrestle with that decision? You update your water plan or you do that, whatever.
Didn't we have a very similar thing, like two years ago where we were we basically said we're gonna refer to this other document. Which would then have all of those details in it and was changeable, separate from the public system, but it was reference. So we didn't have to get into
The details.
The details, it just said for this, refer to you know, this other document. I, and I think it had something to do with the water valves. When Carl was here and we were debating, like, you know, which water valve to use. And like, we don't know anything about water valves. Why, why are we gonna say that we need a K R T one C instead of a V R three two? Who cares? Put that somewhere that can be changed when they develop an XR three seven. Because that's what you're gonna have to use mandated by the state, so.
The, the discussion I remember having, and I might not remember it all, was some standards changes uh, would benefit from the public review that you all are used to conducting here. The city council is not used to conducting. Some of them would just confuse the hell out of everyone and
Right, and we split that off and put it into, so that it go to that file cabinet.
It was wait until later and wait until the city council refers standards amendments to.
Aspiring to something.
You want your aspirations to be higher than what you might actually be able to provide, because you're aspiring to. That's what the comp plan is. It's an aspiration. And it's not a detailed plan of how to get there. But I do think you do need to have some definition of level of service in the comp plan. Referring to public works or the water plan or the transportation plan, whatever. But I, I, I think that's what Ben is saying, that uh, doesn't ecology want you to put something in there like that?
The, it's kind of the level of detail that you have to go to. You know, and whether, yeah, for fast growing large jurisdictions, they want the comprehensive plan to be the primary document. And everything else to um implement. Well, even for us, um, but because they want it to be the primary document, they want this detail laid out here. And then the plans, just to, to refer to that, say the comprehensive plan says this, let's make that our um cause. And so try to uh structure this general sewer plan to achieve.
So wouldn't you have A on all of them then? I haven't had these for aspiring to it.
Well, no, it's not. My statement wasn't that it was aspirational, it was that you're really going to achieve what, whatever's there. And so in those jurisdictions, they have uh, home builders, organizations that are at the table advocating, you know, we can't be A, we can't be A, we can't do it. Have it on something other than A.
Saying if you want all the details, it's gonna take some time to confirm that. It can be done, right?
But that's what your transportation plan is supposed to be. It's, it's a public document and it has public hearings. And people come here to bitch and moan, which they should. We know certain people. And uh, you know, and the, the roads are, I think they are marked A, whatever, B, C, D uh, on that transportation plan that we see every five years.
And why aren't we?
If I remember correctly. I haven't had a chance to dig into the other plans, but.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I'm Really, how come you haven't got the little deal down? I, I just, I really wonder whether or not, given the capacity that we have, that you want to have specified level of service in this document. You know, uh, for one thing, I think you could certainly reference source guidance, such as the transportation plan or the water service plan. I mean, you're already talking about the Western Washington Stormwater Management Plan in here in terms of setting standards. I mean, I mean, that's being done already. And maybe you preface it with, you know, some qualitative language that folks can understand that, you know, the city's there to make sure that we have adequate transportation that provides for bop, 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 you know. And or water does this, you know, I mean, we can, we can come up with again, some qualitative language that would have some meaning to folks, but also then reference to those standards. And when those standards change in terms of the update of the transportation plan or the water system plan, use that as a reference.
Okay. So I'm hearing, well, I'll put this out there for um we should go back to the drawing board on this to some extent to remove the specific references to levels of service uh, here and make any downstream changes that, you know. So part, part of the puzzle that relied on specific. Present that to you. Okay, now we change, that'll change the whiteboard, um, which is fine. But just as an FYI, it'll, some things will change. Much of the structure is built on on the level of service, fitting it in with those state, state expectations. For example, 8B is all about the, the goal itself is. For the first one, ensure individual plans are developed for urban services to meet, to be consistent with the minimum standards that were established in A. And so that, I mean, that'll just check, that needs to change because there are minimum standards.
So if we do the, the language that you were talking about, kind of as, you know, this is what we're looking at. Please go to this for specifics. Does that really change?
It won't. It'll just be, it'll be tweaks to this and it'll, it'll probably be that 8A goes. It'll be a lot of unnecessary text where we can talk about in each individual urban service plans. You need to establish a level of service.
You could probably just put the highest level of service people, right? Like, yeah, that's, that's kind of, I think what we, we mean to say. And then it's up to the developer to go through the exercise in the plans. Say, okay, I'm going to put this intersection together. I'm going to add this traffic. You're currently at a level service B and my development will not increase it to DC, right? So it's the highest feasible. So it would need this and would need potentially other standards. But there may be another one that's like at a D currently and they're like, oh shoot, like we're going to add all these, it's going to make it an F. So okay, we got to do improvements to that. The developer would need to typically.
Understand that in the transportation aspect, one on the other, water and sewer.
We've been talking about that, like what that looks like. Yeah. I think currently, I have no idea kind of what cuts or capacity we have currently. I don't even know what's at luck there. But maybe there are creative ways that a developer would be able to should, able to increase the level of service by doing something different. Or maybe there's some sort of, you know, they add a clarifier, you know, I'm just kind of guessing. I know that in our like sewer treatment plant, we're like having space allowances. So you, we can add a clarify, we can add a U B, you know, so I'm not entirely sure how to make that happen. But at some point, I might also have to say, no more.
Yeah, you can't do it.
I.
Yeah, but that's, that becomes a different.
Yeah.
Comprehensive plan, set up some shit to go on. Example, on the water, on the water side, reservoir capacity to serve additional 150 lots is their capacity in the reservoir to provide fire flow, not just water to the tap, but fire suppression services. And if there's not capacity in that reservoir.
You'll have your own. Yeah. Yeah, fire is a big one. The other thing I was thinking about is. There might be other opportunities to improve like the capacity of plant without adding infrastructure necessarily. So, you know, if they're like able to reduce flow by fixing some pipes that have a lot of like infiltration and inflow from, I mean, I feel like there's got to be creative ways that they can show, no.
Well, but the level of service in the comp plan doesn't need to be that specific and, and.
We want the highest, right?
Yeah, you, you want to, for public safety and health, health. Welfare and health and that. And, and that's an aspiration which belongs in the comp plan. But the specifics of how to get there is in the water.
Water system.
Or the water plant. I think that's what it's called. Yeah. So.
I hear the need for change. Other things that I'll describe changes that went into this and then we move on quickly. Based on our conversation about, we should have the ability to update maps that are under the cover of the comprehensive plan without a magnificent comprehensive. I added language for that. I also added language to make the tracking of changes easier. So we went through all of these. So example, this appendix should be updated by staff action when conference plan amendments occur. Changes to this table are not themselves considered comprehensive plan amendments. And so that's the basis of the text for the maps also. The plan mission doesn't need to make sure that staff got it right of putting 4A into, for 8.1 into that table.
With a cost-based decision-making, what does that mean? That cost benefit?
It was not a cost benefit. It was a component of an objective that was moved and removed. So on page 101 of this draft in yellow under 8B2-2 says, based on provision of future capital facilities on financial cost.
So what do you want?
I already heard that. I will just kind of summarize. I'm going through in my head how to present a cascade of changes to an ever-changing something. So we will scrub a lot of this and it'll probably just be a brand new red line that can be compared to the applicant's submittal by others at, if when necessary, but it won't be something that we'll labor over at these meetings. That's good progress.
So are we ready to move? It's a good thing we don't have a thought for the, for the month because I can't think of anything.
Month of no thinking.
Okay, how about a quick staff report?
Downtown planning, we have picked up the draft downtown plan from 2019 at the subcommittee stage. Jeff is on that. The county had been represented on that by Alan, the county's community development director. He has since assigned those duties to Mike Beck. And so Mike is on that, represents any county.
Is that the courthouse plaza?
You're involved. You can't get away. That is not the courthouse plaza. That's the overall downtown. Sewer projects are underway, construction here on Loop Road for a sewer line extension. Construction on Cascade, oh, not Cascade, I mean, Rock Creek Drive for the Cascade Interceptor. And Palm Station. So they'll be closing that periodically also, at least one day. But we're moving toward that. That's again, I was a sewer planner for about a year employment here. And it's fun to, A, not be a sewer planner.
Is, is what they're doing there on Rock Creek going to prevent that water standing there on the curve around the range? Well, yeah. Oh, okay. Yeah. Cause water has always stood there, but like.
Clogged. Really? Yeah.
Okay, nice. So Mike Beck is the overall downtown plan on the committee.
He's on the committee along with Jeff, city staff, the mayor, downtown association, the economic developments council and some citizen advocates who weren't at the last meeting could still be involved. So that's going transportation grant concepts. We are working on to apply for two big transportation grants this cycle that we wouldn't even know if we could receive them until next year, but we'll, we'll apply for them. At this stage, when we would be the overlap projects, different pot of funding that has less mesh requirement than another pot that we had applied for. And we're putting together one from scratch to get sidewalks from a Cascade Village apartment complex, 32 or 36 units, right in the center of town to the schools. There's not a sidewalk that serves that community at all. And so working with them, we've got a questionnaire out to their residents to say, which of these sidewalks would be the best for you? And then we'll take that and help project based on their preferences to get them from home to school as safely as possible.
Kids do walk on the sidewalks that exist.
Definitely. And one of those Mary is Lasher. It's one of the options though. So.
Good luck with that.
Tyler, thoughts or comments?
Well, I want to invite you all to the May 21st plant and seed swap. The Grange is putting that on over at the library. It's the same day as the library, Friends of the Library book sale. So we'll have our tents out in the parking lot like we did last year. But you can get some nice plants. There's no money involved. You either bring some stuff or, or you just come by yourself and take some stuff home. We'll have some seeds and some plants and other things. May 21st from 10 to 2.
Spruce up Stevenson Day is April 23rd, Saturday. So if you've got nothing to do and want to sweat and pull weeds, show up at the chamber office in the morning.
We're shoveling snow.
Well, that's why I've advised my gardeners at the Stevenson Community Garden there. Do not get enthused yet. There's snow on the mountain. You wait until it's totally gone. And then you bring out all your. Not, not on this side. You gotta be, yeah, it was, this, this is surprise. I'm really hoping that the mason bees did enough pollination on the apple trees last week because they were all out. They're already building their nests and condos we have. So.
Yeah, we've had a lot of mason bees this year.
Yeah, they were, they came, the bumblebees were out for like two months already. Okay. Well, are you guys done?
I think so. Anything else?
I got a young kid.
Yeah.
You want me to do a roll sheet?
Oh, put your signature.
Yes, but Anders was at the office today. So.
We're all here.
How old is your baby?
Oh, she's three. So she's.
Well, she's still a baby.
She's not that young, but.
Yeah, that's a good age.
Ben's a younger one. It is like she will probably be asleep. Yeah.
Were you drunk?
We are drunk.
Thank you, Ben. Totally enjoyed it. My brain got a workout. You're going to find out how many septic fields we have in.
It went up about 50 cents of what you last asked.
Pfizer is available on Tuesdays. If anybody needs a booster and the other ones you can get by calling Public Health. If you're over 50.
Well, it would include me, I guess.
I'm 29.